All right, good evening. This is the February 11th, 2013, Rhinebeck Town Board Meeting. And there's no scouts here, but we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Four announcements. The all real property exemption applications must be received by the assessor's office by March 1st. You can call the assessor's office at 876-4805 if you have any questions. These include all the benefits, the exemptions for seniors and veterans exemptions and so on. A lot of them have to be renewed. I don't believe the 6 star has to be, but if you have any questions, please call 876-4805. We're trying to reach out to seniors who we think may need them at this time. You have to renew this March 1st in order to receive the benefits for the following year. So it's not like it's taxes for that previous year, it's for next year. So anyways. Town Hall will be closed February 18th at observance of President's Day. That's February 18th. There's a couple of, sorry, the C A B, the Conservation Advisory Board, and Wenkin Land Trust will host a presentation on amphibian migrations and road crossings sponsored by the New York State D E C Hudson Valley, Hudson River Estuary Program and Cornell University on February 19th at 7:00 P. M. here at Town Hall, February 19th at 7:00 P. M. You can call 256-3061, 256-3061 for information.
I would just like to give a shout out to that program because, or that's a loud shout out for it. But it is an amazing event called Big Night where you learn how to help amphibians and turtles cross the road. And you'll never drive down one of the Hudson Valley roads again after you know what's behind their crossing. And you'll be out there in the rain helping them across the road and you'll feel really good about it. So it's an amazing program. So if anyone can make it next Tuesday, it's a great thing.
Are there announcements in the board? Okay. Good approval for prior minutes from January 14th.
Tom, before we get to that other announcement, just to remind people, the Association of Towns is holding its annual meeting in New York City, President's Weekend. And there's a full agenda of events and programs that will be of interest to people involved in the town government. Our court clerks are going, at least one of our justices is going. So if anybody else is interested, they ought to go online and look at the agenda for the meetings.
It's Monday and Tuesday, Joe.
Yes, Monday and Tuesday.
And just reminders of our March 25th meeting will be canceled in observance of the board.
Passover.
Passover. So for any other announcements, so for approval for the minutes from January 14th and 28th with a motion and a second for both.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So move. We have a presentation tonight in reference to the cemetery committee, Suzanne Kelly, and if you might just remember some topics we've been dealing with with the board.
Hi. So we've got two issues. One I brought to you folks last, was it the last meeting? Two meetings ago, I think.
Couple years.
Yeah, and we went on our site visit, which you missed. Yep. Elizabeth was there. And so we went over the mausoleum issue. And so here is the revised version of that mausoleum plan. It's basically as it was when we looked at it with just a little bit of tweaking. So as I talked about last time, we are trying to come up with a plan to cap the number of mausoleums in the grassmere section, to reduce the size, or to cap the size of the mausoleums, and to really come up with some better sighting options. So when someone decides to purchase plots for mausoleum, so we decided on this criteria that the total number will not exceed 15. This includes the ones that are there now. So there are, I believe, four. And there are four that are coming in that are being built right now. So that's a total of eight. Four there now, right? Yeah. They're of different sizes. So 15 will be the cap. This is for what is currently surveyed, the current surveyed area of grassmere. There is that open area in the back that is not surveyed yet. And maybe when that is surveyed at some later point, there would be more room for mausoleums. And actually, there'd probably be a better spot for mausoleums because they would be clustered in the back and really in the tree line. Ideally, actually, what I think is that we should maybe even begin to cite some of them back there without having the survey, because you could just build a survey around it. But that might require a much larger conversation. So I thought we'd just move forward with this plan, which is much, much simpler. So total number of mausoleums, not to exceed 15. Mausoleum size will not exceed the two-body capacity, which is the smaller sized mausoleum that is there right now. And then, of course, could be one over the other or side by side. And you saw some of those options.
We have four there already, correct?
That's right.
Some of them are four-body mausoleums?
One is 12, I believe.
Which one is 12?
The big one.
The one that's much bigger than the other ones?
Yeah.
The biggest one. And so the four that are slated to go up are those two-body as well?
Yes, they are.
So the existing, beyond the existing, everything will be two, the smaller size?
Yes, yes, the smaller size, right. And so we also thought that when someone purchases those plots, we'll actually sit down with them and decide where, they can't just pick where they want to, where they want to go, as opposed to buying a plot for an ingrown burial, as you would. So the purchaser would meet with the town board liaison and the cemetery committee chair. And then we also would like for each person, for each purchase of mausoleum site to have the purchaser also purchase a tree. We're going to have a memorial tree program. We have the list of trees here, and they can choose the tree. The tree wouldn't necessarily be sited next to the mausoleum, but the idea is to create tree groves so that the mausoleums are brought down to scale and so that they're buffered from the road. So that's basically the plan.
I can understand why some families might not want to go into eternity together, but limiting it to only two seems
Too small.
Very small, to me.
What would you recommend?
I would say maximum of four. Does that increase the size dramatically?
Yeah, we had certainly considered that. And I, you know, I hear ya.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, you know, it's real. I mean, I understand what you're saying. The concern is also the people around, outside the family who might have to, don't know what's going to happen. You know, you have a, you buy a plot with your expectation of what you would look like, and then all of a sudden, there's this 12-person structure up there. It's kind of, you know, it's not what you expect or your family might expect. So we're kind of looking at it through those eyes, too, I think, because the idea, not just the families who are buying these things or putting them up, so.
The other families who are purchasing things as well. Yeah, I mean, it's tough. It's a tough decision.
I mean, theoretically, the parents could buy one and then children could buy adjoining ones or something like that.
Right. That's what's been done sort of in this one cluster that was just purchased.
Right.
I mean, what do other folks think about what Gina's brought up?
I think you've done a very thorough and thoughtful job, and I'm happy with it. I, you know, I didn't understand, I think it was maybe how, you said it's a personal preference. Some people don't like to be below ground, and I respect that. But I also am very aware of how it looks, how these structures, if not planned for, can really break up the serenity. Or it's the look of the place. And I think you've got, the committee has a nice vision for it, and I'm fine with it. I do have a question about the trees, though.
Yeah.
Who chose the trees?
Those were chosen by Meg Crawford, who has come up with a larger tree planting plan for the cemetery. And these trees, I mean, the way that the, they had different root systems. So each tree will have to be picked for particular spots based upon what other graves are around there and what the, what the roots can take in that, in that spot.
But these, like, this is the American, oh, no, you don't have, the red maple is the American red maple, not the Norwegian. I mean, are we considering indigenous trees? I just have been through this a lot with my own property because trees are dying, climate's changing, and I've been having a lot of discussions with the D E C. And they're just very
Sure. Yeah, I wish I could clarify that for you. And I don't, in fact, she had, she had the Latin names on here, and I took them off. But I can get those to you, and that might clarify.
Yeah, I just wonder.
Yeah.
Will all the mausoleums be in one area?
They're not. We, the original plan was to have them in one area. And then there was sort of backlash against that a few years back from the adjoining property owners. And so the recommendation was to scatter them throughout and to buffer them, to either have them in, against the tree line, which is where they are going right now, but not have them all clustered against the tree line, because otherwise it will look sort of like a little city. So to have them against the tree line where possible and without creating one big block of mausoleums, to then put them in a few other spaces throughout the cemetery with tree clusters around them. But also limit the number of them so that it's not overwhelming at the same time.
Kind of like in the old part of the cemetery.
Kind of like in the old part of the cemetery, yeah. I mean, and when we went on the tour, Elizabeth could see that when they were sort of up against the tree line, they really were dwarfed in a way that made them look good. Yeah. And they didn't, almost, didn't just look like suddenly there's this huge house that came out of nowhere.
No, I think it's nice. It's lovely. And then the natural section, it's
Yeah.
Feeling like there's a cohesive plan is, a cemetery can be a beautiful, a beautiful place.
Yeah.
I think, though, there is something to what Gina says about limiting it to just two graves.
Yeah.
That some people may want to be buried
Right.
Close and have their children
Right.
Nearby. I don't know. You know, whatever number you pick, there'll always be some who'll say, well, I want more.
More.
But, you know, to the extent that it's feasible, you might consider increasing it to four.
Consider or give them two together?
Well, Gina, there's only, there's only 10 on, there's only
11.
No. 15, no.
Seven.
There's only seven left. So there's a finite number. I mean
Oh, 15 total.
Well, with four existing, four have been sold, and there's 15. So eight from 15, seven.
So are we, in the big picture, looking to move away from mausoleums totally because of part of the green cemetery?
I think that we can't move away from them, because this is, people want them, we have to be able to offer them, but just not to offer them in any size possible. Like I said, there is that section in the back that still needs to be surveyed, and I think once that opens up, then we could offer more in that back section. But I think this is basically, in terms of design, what that area can really take right now. Otherwise, it could be overwhelming.
I get it. I'm not saying, I don't know that I want my kids that close to me. Just kidding, kids.
Yeah. I mean, this was a consideration. This was something that we talked about in terms of having four.
I'm sure.
We've kind of, you know, we've gone back and forth about it. I'm slightly ambivalent about it, to be honest.
You're what?
I'm slightly ambivalent about it myself. I'm not, I'm not totally sure, two or four, two or four. But, so I hear your point.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
I love it. I love what you're doing there.
Okay. So do we want to vote on it, or do we want more changes? Love to get it passed through and just be done with it for now. We could always make changes later.
Want to make a motion?
Well, it has to be done in the form, I think, of a resolution.
Okay.
I think you ought to resolve whether it's two or four for the mausoleum before we
Well, I'm resolved to two. If, if you're not resolved to two, then I need to hear that, and I can go back to the committee, and we can talk about it.
And this pertains strictly to the designed areas now.
That's right.
The back area doesn't include, that's
It doesn't.
Down the road.
That's right.
So there's room for expansion for that. So we could, it's up to, you know, you guys want to expand it to four, it's kind of, you know. We still have the review with the committee and the board for anybody who wants to put these in. So it's not like it's a set rule, although there is a design
That's true.
Made.
That is true.
So, you know.
Yeah.
So you're saying if somebody wants to come in with four, they would come to the cemetery committee, and then the cemetery committee would come back to us?
We're not offering four in this section of the cemetery.
If we pass it as is, we wouldn't be offering four.
Right, but I think that's what we're deciding, whether, you know, I've heard two board members say they would go with four. I heard one board member say two, and I haven't heard two board members saying anything.
Well, this is a committee recommendation, and the committee spent a long time on this. And if you go and take the tour and look, there's a vision here that, I mean, certainly as a committee, we could say, no, we want 10. But where does it come from? You know, it's very subjective. There's been a lot of thought into this, and I'm appreciative of it.
I also heard
I said personally.
That is ambivalent, so, you know.
Well, I'm personally ambivalent only with the point that Gina's making, that there are some families that will want four. I'm just, I feel people's, I can understand that. But in terms of the vision, I agree with Elizabeth. There was a lot of thought put into it. In terms of the overall vision of the cemetery, I do think that it's what's best for the grassmere section.
Well, and then children have their own families, too, and so then that's a bigger question.
If you need a mausoleum for 20, it may not be the place for you.
Yeah, I'm, even though I'm thinking two is restrictive, I think it's a very good start, and I'm prepared to go ahead and support it.
Okay.
If you want to push it for a vote tonight.
That'd be great.
I'm okay with that. And then we could look for expanded ones in the expanded portion.
In the back area, that's what I would really like to see. If we, you know, if there was demand, but you know, there, it just depends. We don't, you know, there isn't like huge demand for people buying, and they're very expensive, so.
What is the cost for a two-person mausoleum? Is it 15,000? Is it 25,000?
I don't know. A lot. Thousands.
Hundred thousand?
Very possibly.
But just for the lots, or, you know, just for the four?
The lots? Well, you buy the plot, the plot is the same. And that's something moving forward that we probably might want to talk about, increase later on, increase the plot cost. I'd have to check with Cole Rockley to see what the cost of the mausoleums are. I don't know.
Are they the only suppliers around here?
Uh, no, there are a few others. That gets to my next issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I believe our clerk said he could, you know, create a resolution after we vote on it, so.
Great.
So we'll follow up with a resolution in the next meeting? Is that
No, we'd like to vote on it now. We can vote on it tonight and have a resolution created.
So, okay, so the resolution would indicate total number in the currently designed new cemetery section, of all the sections, to be no more than 15, which would leave us with seven, and that the mausoleum size would not see two people at this time. And then it will also include, in the resolution, the purchaser must meet
Would you just have a resolution adopting this as presented?
Yeah. Sure.
Second.
Okay. Do you want a motion? I'll motion that.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So move.
Nays?
Gina, I'm going to follow you on this.
Okay, Joe. Joe, I'll let you be in mine, if you'll let me be in yours.
I'll have to talk to my wife about it. It's only two.
Wow.
You know, if we were going to do four, we might share it with you.
Okay, we'll go right along. So this is the second part of fulfilling the proposed survey, well, the survey that's in progress, sorry. So to complete the survey, we have to complete the monumentation. And so this is going to require us getting some more funds out of our capital account to complete this. This is actually something
How much is in the capital account?
Forty-seven thousand, I think.
So we've got it.
I'm asking.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'm looking at
And when you say monumentation, this was
We have 47,000. We've got to work.
Forty-five, two, sixty-three.
Monumentation was actually the delineation of each plot. Is that correct?
Monumentation, you can see it on here. You see where these little round circles are, the little dots?
Yes. Set monuments?
Right, they're monuments that are set so that the caretaker can draw a line and be able to figure out where particular plots are, so that it's all clear where everyone is.
Is this what Marie Welch did for us?
No, Marie Welch is doing the survey, but she needs the monumentation to complete the survey?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not exactly sure what I'm looking at. The, there's a, there's a sort of a semicircle off to the right. Is that the drive, the driveway, the little?
No, this is the entire natural section.
This is the wooded area where we were walking.
This is the whole wooded area. And the arc area there is, is actually a wooded area right now, so when we walked through there, you wouldn't have noticed it. But it will become what will be a common area.
Okay, where, I remember where you pointed.
Right, where there won't be graves.
Okay.
So these monuments need to be set. And there was originally a larger, a much more expensive, much more elaborate plan that was going to include putting in a steel beam. And we, of course, decided that that wasn't going to happen, because also it's a green section, and we didn't, we wanted to do it for less money and in a much more natural way. And so this is the simplest way to do it. This is actually similar to how it's set up in the conventional part of the cemetery. So anyway, I, we did get several different estimates, and they range between, on the high end
Who prepared this for you, Suzanne?
Dave Queen.
Nice.
Each one of these little squares is a separate burial spot?
No. Oh, in the thing?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, you got it.
Each one of these little things.
Right.
How many are there?
Well, there are a total, I think, of something like 870, but probably not every single one of those could be a burial because it is a wooded area. So we're going to move along in sections and see what needs to be removed and what will stay. So
And the burial, are they digging down?
Yeah.
And there's enough room in here to
Yeah.
Get a machine in to dig?
Yeah, so right, so right now, Gary has, the caretaker, has cleared a section for, so that all of this monumentation can take place. If you go in there now, there's, you'll notice quite a difference in this one sort of, in the, in the one section where that needs to happen. So yeah, so Dave Queen has been extremely helpful, because he knows exactly what needs to happen, because he was a surveyor for years. And so, yeah, so we're very lucky to have that.
And after the burial, is there perpetual care, or how does that get met?
Uh, no, the, the care will be very simple, actually. It will, this one, the path will, will be brush hogged probably twice a year, and everything else will grow up wild. So the, there won't be care in the way that there is in a conventional cemetery, where it will be mowed around gravestones and that sort of thing. It will be really, basically wild.
So mowing is not required, because the spots will be very close together?
What do you mean?
Well, won't grass grow up?
Yeah, well, you got it.
Okay, so if I'm, somebody, I know somebody's buried in here, how will I find the, which part they're buried in, or that's not relevant to a green cemetery?
Well, there will, oh, in terms of markers? Markers will be allowed. That was on our original plan, that was passed already. But markers will be allowed. There'll be flat stones, there'll be unpolished, flat indigenous stone. So, and probably most people will choose a marker, although some people may not choose a marker, in which case you will not be able to find them unless they, they take you there, when they say this is the spot. Yeah.
So there's no perpetual care, there's just this mowing around this buffer?
That's it, pretty much. There probably will be, need to be, as we're moving along, some work in terms of removing trees and other kinds of down material. But Gary will be able to take care of most of this, as he's already done. And in fact, he'll be the one that will put in all of these monuments. So we don't have to hire somebody else to do that. We just have to pay for the supplies to get it completed. And he's fully aware that he, he needs to take care of this. So anyway, on the high end, it's $5,900 for the monuments, and on the low end, it's 42 something. Forty-four fifty, thank you. And we have four different estimates.
Do you have a preference of?
I guess we would like to go local. I mean, these are all relatively local, but I don't have a personal preference.
Well, who is the, is the lowest local?
I probably shouldn't say.
We can't vote on it unless we know.
Why not go with the lowest?
What should I say?
Well, you as the committee, do you have a preference?
Why don't we, why don't we vote to allow, is this committee going to decide? It's out of your capital fund, or?
They're all very close, it sounds to me.
What is the, the maximum, 59?
The maximum was 59, and the lowest was 44.50.
Oh, you got one at 45, and you got one at 44.20.
And one at 59.
There's two little ones.
What? This is 15.
There are four of them.
It looks like two at 59. Each post delivered, well, this, this looks like more. But we, well, the thing is, if we have a policy of competitive bidding, we do have a policy, why don't we follow that policy to go with the lowest responsible bidder? I don't understand why we're deviating from that.
I think, I agree. My only concern is that the product might not be, I have the expectation of lower bids. I want to make sure Dave Queen's kind of the expert with it, in the committee.
You want to hear him pass these?
I want to make sure that the product is what
That's a good point, yeah.
You got to go look at it, and
I would, I would have it approved at no more than 59.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Okay.
And then let the committee, I mean, these guys have been involved in a long time and a lot of process, let them decide what product they want to get out of this bid, if that's a
Yeah, I mean, I would feel the most comfortable having Dave decide, to be honest, just because he seems to know the most. But
I'm concerned about a hole in it that needs to be there for surveying and so on.
They seem, they all understand that, though, right?
It's all in the same, okay, do you all have that?
I'm all for making that motion to not to exceed 59, and you guys
I was thinking along the way, I got the votes called, it's a very, a very monumental policy, and they're all relatively local, some are more local. But I thought, wouldn't it also a policy, if you can do something, doesn't necessarily mean you don't know what you did, you got
I'm not aware of that kind of policy.
Yeah, I'm not either.
That's not our policy.
That is a, that is a goal.
Yeah, I, I think you ought to come back if you're not going to use the lowest to[1645.01] Yeah, I, I think you ought to come back, if you're not going to use the lowest, explain to us why.
Well, and I also think, go to them and say, "We want to use you, can you match this?", and I've had very good, very good results with that, in many different areas.
I'm fine with that.
Negotiating with the town, going to them and saying, "Look, we really want you, you've got to come closer to this..."
Sure.
"...bid, if you want it."
Okay. It's okay with me. I'm fine.
Are we going to make a motion not to exceed?
Yeah, I did, I think.
Well, I, I think we're saying two different things. I'm saying you should come back before we pass anything as to, uh, how much it's going to cost, and explain why you're not going to go with the lowest, and I would not do, shall not exceed, a higher number because...
Two weeks. I'm fine with going a motion not to exceed, so...
I am as well, because I'm sure you'll go talk to them, I'm sure they'll come down.
I will, I, I mean, I don't, I would obviously prefer to have more money left in our capital account, so...
Well, we can say not to exceed five thousand, we can say that, Joe.
Say any number, but it seemed to me we shouldn't be making exceptions, uh, from our policy unless there's a reason, and you can wait two weeks and tell us why we should make the exception.
I agree with Joe.
Hey, you're not going to be putting them in, in the next two weeks anyway, right?
No, we won't be.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Product that he's, should be, I just want to make sure that it is.
Yeah, have Dave weigh in.
Make sure it includes, um, you know, transportation of the product.
But that's the only issue, right? For, for, for two weeks, that's it?
It's got to, it's got to include delivery too.
It does, it includes, they all include delivery. Yeah.
Are there any guarantees that come with this, as to how long the marker lasts, or? Any guarantees?
They're granite.
What?
They're granite.
I'm going to order some granite markers from my property.
Right, that's right. Okay?
All right, good, so, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that, just it's true, they, they can't do anything yet anyway, as long as we get it passed in two weeks, it's great.
Thank you Suzanne. Tom, relatedly on that, am I the liaison now for the cemetery? Did you assign me that in the year?
Actually, I was, I thought you wanted something to do, so we kind of did it together, but you don't need to do it, you don't have to, but I'm still doing it, if you want to share it, it's fine.
That's good, okay.
All right? Um, we have a meeting at the office, at the cemetery office.
We don't, we can't, we're back here.
Okay. Are these for us, or?
Maybe we should give it back to them.
Suzanne, are these our, are these our copies? Do you need these, the bids?
I need those, I need those, yes, but I can get your copies.
No, thanks. So Suzanne, just start including me on the, for the meetings.
Sure.
So I'll know when they are.
So, one last thing, sorry, uh, trees, do you want to present this?
Yeah, I'm here, um, representing the Rhinebeck Village Tree Commission, we are a...
Fantastic, by the way.
How's your tree doing?
Fabulous.
Are you watering it every day?
I did water it.
Good, good.
Not over.
We are an official tree city, I have my official hat here.
Love that.
So we are planning on doing our spring planting, April twentieth, everybody remember that, and come and help us, and we want to plant in the cemetery, so that's why I'm here, um, and I have a little map here of where we would like to plant the cemetery, it's along Route nine, where that little market is. And I believe we need permission from the town board.
Thank you.
Do you need this?
This little line right here.
Yeah, that little line, that's along Route nine, and this would, this would go above the wall.
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry, where is Route nine?
Like, where's the...
This is Route nine, right here.
And the little office, Gary's office, show Joe where that is.
It's right there in the corner.
It's right there, okay.
What is this?
That's, um, the woods.
April twentieth is a Saturday.
This would be between nine and Gary's house?
Uh, yeah, we would, we would want to plant all along the wall, along, along this area down here to the entranceway, on the northern end.
How many trees do you think?
Well, that's up to, I don't know if Meg told you today?
Yeah, so, uh, we, we sort of just estimated today, Gary gave us a sense that there may be as mu, as much as three hundred feet where we can plant, there's one section up toward the caretaker's house, it's too narrow, probably to plant, but as we get further down, there is room, uh, she thought if there were, if there was two hundred feet, then we could plant seven trees, if there was three hundred feet, we could plant ten, and then there might be in addition, flowering trees around the caretaker's house, uh, but that's the plan, I think they're going to be...
I'm not sure, whatever, she picks, Meg is the, Meg is the expert, Meg's wrong.
What's the setback?
There was some, there was some concern about the stone wall, that they might interfere with the stone wall, she said that that absolutely would not happen, that the roots will grow away from the wall, even if we took the wall apart, which we will need to do at some future point if we ever get that, two grand, oh, two grand, two hundred thousand dollars to fix the stone wall, uh, even then it would be fine.
But, but how far back are they?
From the wall?
Yeah.
Uh, we haven't determined that yet.
There's, is, I think it's between nine and twenty feet as you're moving down, that, that much space for the trees to be planted.
How close will they be to Gary's house?
Like I said, they're, they'll actually, they won't be that close to his house because the one narrow section won't fit trees there, but there may be, she was suggesting perhaps planting two trees around his house, maybe some flowering trees to, there's no shade around, it would really cool down the building.
And your committee is in favor of this, or not in favor of it, or you're still reviewing it?
Yeah, so far the committee's in favor, and we, the only concerns the committee had, and you were there, Tom, right, was about the wall?
Yeah.
Um, and about the space between the wall and the graves, but we seem to have clarified that today with, with Gary, so I think, I think it should be fine.
And you need permission from us, Howie?
Well, it's town, it's town...
Town on land in the village.
Right.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
So just trying to cover all of our spots here, before we do it.
And you're not going to charge for this?
No, we're not going to charge.
No.
So, I don't know if you can make the decision tonight, but the decision might not have to be made tonight, if you can make it in two weeks, that would be great.
Well, because you're, it's going to be done in April, right?
Yeah, but we have to kind of start ordering the trees.
Yeah, market.
Why wouldn't we be able to decide? What, it seems like a nice thing.
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
You guys did a spectacular job.
Thank you.
Did you get a tree in front of your house?
I did.
What did you get?
Someone came and knocked on my door and said, "You're eligible for a tree", I said, "All right."
What happened?
Cecily Fraser came...
She's the chairwoman.
Yeah, it was amazing, I got a catsura.
By my house?
Yes.
Yeah, they gave you a tree in front of your house?
Yes!
I need a tree.
I fed them though, I fed them, but...
Howie, how big are the trees? What, how?
It was about five feet?
When we first planted them, yeah, about five feet.
No, they're, so they're just like a couple...
Yeah, they're bare root trees, they don't even have roots, so...
Fantastic.
A person can ha, carry them by themselves.
Do you get them from Cornell, or?
No, we get them from a nursery called Schechtel's, in upstate New York.
They're very cold when they arrive.
They're cold?
Yeah, when we planted them in the cemetery the last time, they were, the tractor trailer was freezing.
Oh.
I'm for it, I, I, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion and second to approve, is there a number you said?
Seven to ten.
Seven to ten trees, you said, right?
Plus a couple around the house.
Yeah, I'll come help this time, Howie.
Good, bring your shovels.
Will.
April twentieth.
So, uh...
I got it on the calendar.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so yeah, now, any second, if I can, that's it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Moving along. All right, so, uh, next item is a liaison report, the Duchess Alliance.
Uh, I just attended this breakfast on Thursday for the Northern Duchess Alliance to, um, publicize their report that they've worked on since September, and it's extremely valuable, I made a couple of extra copies, and there's copies in our town hall office for anyone that wants to see them, there's also copies of it on the Northern Duchess Alliance website, as well as the extended forty-page version that they did as well, and the University of SUNY New Paltz was in charge of, with, with doing the survey, their, um, what's that called? Credo. Yeah, credo, but they also have, you know, anyway, they, they had three main points that they looked at, it was all about shared services, which is extremely important and becoming even more important now, and they looked at three different things, assessment for taxes, the highway and transportation, and healthcare, and they found... Health insurance. Health insurance, yeah, health insurance and, and costs for that, all areas in which there are many, many different ways that towns and villages can work together to save money, the most important being the health insurance, Tompkins County, as Joel has been haranguing us for years about, is, has done it very successfully, saving hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for each community within that county, so that's something that we need to follow up on. It, it was very embarrassing for me as a town board member that the town of Rhinebeck was not included in this survey, because apparently their repeated requests for information were not responded to, so I spoke to the professor that was in charge of the study, and I asked if it was too late to get the data to him, and was, I was willing to take that on, and to get the information from our assessor's office, the highway department, as well as our bookkeeper, and he said, unfortunately, the study was closed and we couldn't be included in it, the village of Rhinebeck is included in it, which is good, but we are not, as the town, but I spoke with his assistant after, and he said that if I could get the information to him, he would try to drop it in in such a way that we could get some value out of comparison of the numbers, so I'm following up with him on that and, um, working on that, but it's very, very interesting, and I think it really shows that sharing of services and consolidation of services is something that we have to take a very serious look at and, and consider in the next year or two.
Thank you, any further liaison reports? Great, on for business.
You know, I do have one, um, Panda, they're having a, a meeting soon, but we're in need of a town of Rhinebeck resident to be a liaison to, um, our public access Northern Duchess Alliance, so if anybody would like to step forward and volunteer, um, you can contact me, or Bill Nieves, who's the president of Panda, um, we need a Rhinebeck resident volunteer.
Have any, um, people who could...
I'll, I'm going to shake the trays, yeah, I will.
That guy right there might be interested.
Yeah.
In the green shirt.
You need one for the village too?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, apparently, you know, and...
You mentioned Northern Duchess, you said that it's a...
Public asset, access Northern Duchess, it's five, it's Tivoli...
I, I'm sorry, I thought, I kind of mixed it up with this, so, it's not, it's for the town, not for...
Panda, the acronym of Panda is public ac...
I know, I know, all right, I thought you said Lions, all right, oh my god.
It's Panda, we, yeah, since I'm here in the town of Rhinebeck, I'm trying to get someone for the town of Rhinebeck, it's just, it's this thing with, um, a lot of people are having trouble getting volunteers, and, you know, Panda's chugging along nicely, it's really well-run, um, but Bill Nieves, who's a town of Rhinebeck resident, and is the head, the president of it, you know, has asked for our help, my help, in getting, um, someone to step forward and, and help work on policy.
Good, yeah, thank you, any further liaison reports? Okay, all right, um, moving on for business items, a resolution approving the BAS software contract, that's a contract, that's your tab for the BAS software, it's the clerk's software, basically.
Motion.
Any discussion?
No.
Bruce, this is the one that you questioned last time, and come to find out it is just the town clerk's software.
Uh, poll paper, aye?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
So moved. Item two is a resolution approving abstract two vouchers VAP one sixty-nine through VAP one eighty-one for twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had one question, I think in this batch, the, um, I'm sorry, uh, two thousand dollars that we pay for the parade, Memorial Day parade, are we just paying now for the parade last year?
They're putting in the request for, right, we wanted, uh, written requests from them, and we're trying to catch up with that, so...
Yeah, it seems a little late for everyone, yeah, okay, just wanted to, yeah, bring that to...
I would also, um, I was wondering about our phone system, why, how, do we have a policy about what we do with cell phones that are not being used, or are only used seasonally for rec, are they used?
Let me just speak to this, Shelley, our bookkeeper, has requested that we vote on, or give her guidance on our, um, our building, um, code enforcement officer, but we're supposed to be calling him something else, our...
Building inspector.
Our building inspector two's cellphone, he prefers, prefers to use his own cellphone, so can she have permission to cancel that? Um, which made me say, do we want to have some kind of policy any, anyway, that we have a rec phone here that we're paying for twelve months out of the year, I mean, are we aware of this? I think we should discuss Ed Matic tonight and moving forward, I think we should look at cellphone policies if, um, and certainly I have to talk to a couple of people before I say anything about it, for instance, if someone has a town cellphone and it's a personal cellphone, should we be paying for the whole thing, or should five of them, let's talk about our building inspector two's cellphone, um, he prefers to use his own, so can we cancel that?
Certainly, it seems like we should cancel if a phone isn't being used, that seems to be a no-brainer, uh, I do think that cellphone usage should be looked into, rated, certainly the payment things we could do if a phone, we can just review the bill, and if the phone's being used for twenty percent, that's what they do for tax purposes, right?
Our current monthly charge is two forty-seven thirty-eight, Shelley has asked that we make some kind of decision regarding, um, the building department's phone.
That's, that's for five phones, right?
Uh, yes, five phone, uh, one, two, three, yeah, five phones, thirty-three ninety-two a month, he prefers to use his own phone.
Yeah, there was a question about, uh, for recreation, having a phone at the pool for summer programs, and then also for the retro...
I think it's too soon to talk about that, I think we need more information, you know?
You're, okay, yeah, sure.
I'm only Ed Matic.
What, but, on the cellphone, the rec cellphone, she should have collected that when the person, when their, their term ended, at the end of September.
Right.
So that should have been turned off then.
I don't know where it is, or if it, I think we have some work to do before we discuss it.
Okay.
I think we can discuss Ed, uh, our building inspector's phone.
I understand what, he doesn't use the cellphone.
He doesn't want to, he wants to use his own phone.
Okay, so, I agree with Gina, it's a no-brainer, we should authorize her to cancel that contract.
Motion, second?
I second the motion you're making.
Are phone records foilable, does anyone know?
I thought so.
John's pointing out that we have a motion in front of us to approve the vouchers.
Well, I brought it up for discussion.
Well, we have an open motion already, so...
All in favor, aye for the vouchers?
Aye.
Second, oh, aye.
What are we aying about?
Uh, the motion to approve the vouchers.
Yes.
Which includes the payment of the cell phones, okay, fine.
It's from two months ago.
Yeah, we, this one you gotta pay.
I understand, yeah, I understand.
Then we can make a new motion to cancel the building department phone.
Motion, second.
Motion.
Second.
Poll paper, aye?
Aye.
What are we on?
Canceling building department cellphone.
The bookkeeper has requested that we...
Is this the abstract we're voting on?
We already voted that.
So we're voting on the canceling the cellphone?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a question, and the question is, are the phone records foilable? If, if they're foilable and we're using somebody else's cellphone, then we have, we may have a problem, so that's all I, that's the only reason I'm asking. You know, Dot?
I would think that any public transaction with employees, whoa.
No matter...
Not being a party.
Yeah. We all use our cell phones, so ours would be foilable as well.
And, and I'm fine with mine, but I'm not sure that, you know, when you, when you do that, you want to make sure the employee...
They know their records are foilable.
Yeah.
Maybe get your attorney to sign a kind of disclosure, or even saying, "I agree, I use my private phone, but that phone is foilable for...
Yeah.
Prosecute it.
Where are we on this, are we voting on this, are we going to hold it for two weeks to tell Ed Maddox that, uh...
Our building inspector has informed our bookkeeper one more time that he does not use the phone, he's using his own phone, she's requested that we cancel it.
I think we voted to cancel it.
You guys want to wait, we'll wait.
But I like the idea about having him sign a, a waiver, a release that...
You gotta go through your legal...
Yeah.
...with connotations.
Which will do...
I'm going to tell you, like, you know, then we need to address every single elected official and everybody, because there's no policy in place, so...
Well, the same goes for, uh, your email sites too, you're using personal emails, You're using personal emails, they're foilable, just like the phone would be foilable, whether it's personal or not.
But it's different for employees than elected officials. Elected officials basically know that, employees...
Might not.
Might not. And so, that, that's the distinction we're trying to make.
That's good, that's a good point, Bruce.
I'm happy voting on it and dealing with the foilable issue as a sep- separate issue.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Item three is a resolution approving abstract two vouchers VAP 169 through 181 for $26,733.29.
Motion, second?
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item four is a resolution approving preliminary capital project abstract for $26,733.29. Motion, second?
Motion.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close.
Get one, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five is a resolution approving, uh, budget transfers and amendments, uh, seen on your tab number eight.
Motion.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Item six is, uh, requesting the state public service commission to audit 2012 franchise fees received.
Motion.
As nine.
Second. Um, I'm the one that brought this up, the, and I was confused by the, um, the accounting process, but then I went back after we discussed it today, and I looked, and while the number keeps going up, uh, it's different. It was on the revenue reports in 2010, it was $110,000, but the odd was $55,000. So, th- that's where I was getting confused, the way it's being recorded and reported. However, um, it's, every time we've done this in the past, we've gotten more money because they found, and Joe's, um, had some experience in, with the village, I guess, talking to the village, that they paid some, you could, you paid somebody, I believe, Howie to, to go and get it. This is free from the public service commission. And I, there's, there's issues because our contract is for the cable lines, basically, and the modems, the phone, things like that. The cable companies are contesting that that's not in the agreement anymore, they don't have to pay for it, and so there's some wiggling going on. I, I still think we should get an audit every once in a while, especially since it's free. We're asking John to send a letter to public service commission and ask for one.
Well, I, you know, I'm the Panda liaison, I've spoken to Bill Neves about this, it's a little bit more complicated, and we can certainly do it, and there's further steps we can take. Have you, have you spoken to Bill about it and gotten his input, or anyone from Panda?
Uh, as far as what they wanted to do, hiring the consultant to get equipment?
No.
If, if...
Not getting the equipment, just, you know, auditing this and why the fees fluctuate and where we are.
No, I haven't, because three years ago, when we, when we went through that, they wanted to hire somebody to, to go and do it.
This is a free audit, we can request it.
Right, so, I, I don't know, I'm missing the point.
Well, I, I'm dealing with Panda, and I would, I would've appreciated a heads-up. This is coming out of a little left field, and...
I thought I sent you this ahead of time.
I asked, uh, the PUC to do an audit, um...
This has nothing...
About a year and a half ago, and...
Is that the Public Utilities Commission?
Yeah, and didn't get anywhere, but it, it's certainly worthwhile trying again. So, you know, I don't see any downside in it. It's free.
But, yeah, I don't, I don't see any downside in either, but there's a disconnect here. Public access television...
Is paid for.
Is, is, is paid for by the town. The fees that we get come in, don't go to Panda. The fees that we get come in and go to whatever we wanna do with them. They go to part-town fund and they go to highway. The, the equipment that's in the contract with, with Time Warner Cable is the part, from my experience, that Panda's interested in. But, but the funding stream is not related to Panda at all. It, it's their contract with us for what Fred's doing back there.
On the, and providing the public access service and, um...
Well...
They pay us for allowing them to put the wires on the poles...
Yeah.
Running through the town, and...
Right, so let's...
The payment is based on the number of subscribers they have and the number of channels they carry, and...
You're talking about the contract that we have with Time Warner?
Yes.
And the contract rolls over every year. If we don't renegotiate it, we can certainly request an audit. There was motion several years back to hire a firm that specializes in this, and they would take part of the money that they recover.
Right, what the village did is they hired somebody who got 50 percent, or is supposed to get 50 percent of what they actually recover. I don't know if the village ever got any money out of it or not.
That's branch.
Yeah.
So it's free, it's, it's a letter?
Yeah, it's no downside. So, have we approved it?
Motion, second to approve.
I think we have a motion.
Oh, yeah, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Uh, item seven is a resolution relating to the declaration of terms and covenants and agreements and positions restricting the, in restrictions in workforce housing agreement with, um, Reinbeck Gardens Group LLC.
Look, let me, uh, that...
Motion.
Second.
At the last meeting, um, I, uh, talked about, and, uh, a representative from the committee was here, we talked about the problem of getting financing for workforce housing, and the developer of the gardens is trying to pre-clear with Fannie Mae financing for the units to be built at the gardens. And there was a fear at that point that Fannie Mae would not approve financing for workforce housing unless we waive the restrictions on the use of the units in the event of foreclosure. Uh, we said at that point we were still trying to reach, uh, Fannie Mae to get an official ruling as to whether or not we had to waive as a condition of getting Fannie Mae financing. Uh, so we passed the resolution authorizing, uh, a waiver if necessary. Uh, we now have found out from Fannie Mae that we do not have to waive, or we think we don't have to waive. Their official policy is you don't have to waive. They still haven't approved the, uh, purchase of the units with their financing, but, uh, so conceivably they could come back and ask for a waiver, but so far, uh, they haven't, and we think the application is proceeding.
That's just for Fannie Mae?
Just for Fannie Mae.
Not for Freddie Mac?
For Freddie Mac, we know we have to waive. And for FHA, we know we have to waive.
Okay.
Uh, but at this point, the developer is not applying to FHA and not applying to Freddie Mac. But, I wanna, uh, well, we're up to the point where we may have possibly buyers for a couple of units, and we may have financing for a couple of, uh...
Workforce housing buyers?
Yes.
That's great.
We may. Uh, uh, we'll see, but, uh, we're, we're hopeful. Uh, so we're now talking about marking up deeds and declarations with these restrictions running in perpetuity. Um, I think, John, and I don't see it attached here, is the actual declaration, uh, which, I thought we had sent, uh, you on late Friday, uh, but I'm asking the board to vote on allowing Tom to sign the declaration. What the declaration will say is that the board has the power to change any of the restrictions in the workforce housing program on a going-forward basis, so that...
Including, um, including giving up the in-perpetuity workforce housing status on a unit?
Well, i- it's more that we can add things in the future if we want to, and it would only apply to purchasers after changes are made.
I thought that this was good news for us, because I thought that we, our, the status was protected.
For Fannie Mae, yes.
And that's, this is the only thing that we're voting on?
This, what we're voting on is the changes in the deed, um, which would be helpful if we're attached.
Can we table this?
Problem is, we may have to act within the next couple of weeks, if, if we do have a buyer.
But there's nothing here to vote on.
Unfortunately, um, I don't know what to say, John. We, we sent it, or at least my secretary says she sent it on Friday. Um, that's why I had asked you about it. You sure you... Well, we're gonna go into executive session at some point. Maybe we can come back to this, and maybe you can look for it, uh, on your computer.
What you were looking for today, or Joan was looking for?
So let's table this and come back to it.
All right. Excuse me.
But Elizabeth, these would give us more powers, not taking it away...
I just...
And add more restrictions.
That's just what I wanted to clarify. I understand the conundrum with the financing and the, the deed restrictions for in-perpetuity status, workforce housing status. It's a concern for me, I'm sure for all of you guys, so I just...
Yeah, well, let's hold it and come back to it after the executive session, and maybe we can find...
Did you send it just to John or to the rest of the board?
It was sent to John.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't get anything.
Yep.
All right, so, um, items for discussion is a need for LWRP workshop concerning notification procedures, consistency for protocols for the CAB code enforcement officer, planning board, zoning board, appeals and liaisons.
Okay, um, this is a follow-on, just another piece of work. Uh, last year, when Gina set up the wetlands, um, workshop, this was an action that was, we said we would take at that time, and, uh, so we're just following through on it. What we wanna do is, and it's, it comes from the CAB, we just wanna make sure that we're tight on how we're getting notified from the, the agencies outside of, of the town and the village. Um, I guess there's some problems with where the different jurisdictions are, and, um, so what we'd like to do is get everybody together, all the key players together, and make sure they've got everything in sync. Is that, so, um, and I was gonna ask John if he would do the calendaring for people? Sorry.
Who's gonna run it?
It'll be a panel, it'll, it'll be, I guess, each of the people, right? Each of the heads of the boards.
Yeah, I mean, we discussed last year, the only other person to bring in would be John Lyons. I'm not sure whether he's gonna be pro bono or not, but...
He was very kind to do it pro bono before, but I can't speak for him this year.
He's been giving us an awful lot of time.
Yeah.
It would be, uh, you know, the CAB, the planning board, zoning board, code enforcement officer. We try to get somebody from the state, maybe somebody from DEC, and just synchronize the, the filings, applications, how we get, uh, notification from those agencies, so we can do everything in a timely manner. They're very time-sensitive, these documents.
How is this different from what we did last year, Jeff?
We didn't have any LWRP workshop.
We had, we said we were going to, that was a wetlands workshop.
We had the wetlands.
Yeah. But a lot of the same things apply, in this case, it seems to me.
No, the LWRP is completely different from the wetlands.
No, I know that that's different, but the interdepartmental communication and the public notification and the filing of permits and all of that, all of that is very similar.
Yeah, within the, the town, we're doing a great job. This is more about the Department of State, DEC, and...
Ag and farm, Ag and market.
Yeah, because they don't necessarily communicate, we don't have the mechanism set up, and you know that we communicate with them on a regular basis, so sometimes we hear about things that we don't, so it's setting up a policy on how we do it.
Do you wanna give us a list of people, or give it to John, poor John, of, of who you think should be there? Bruce, anyone else that you think as well?
I'm being the liaison here.
Okay.
How about the RDA?
For me?
Stand on this thing, you done with it?
I don't know, I'm just, the CAB is, there's a lot to learn, so...
As a, as a real estate agent, I found that, that forum we had very informative.
Yeah.
For me to even be able to tell potential buyers what they, what they're in for, and what they can and can't do, and need to apply for, and it used to be that you could just say, "Oh, sure, you can do it," but it's different.
Great, item two for discussion.
Uh, the Open RDA software assessment. Uh, last year, like, December, I called up RDA, uh, and asked them for an inventory of what we had installed, and they sent it to us. Um, and the reason was because I wanted to know, you know, we, we were trying to figure out, are, are we leveraging technology properly and getting the most out of it? Uh, so they sent us a list, and, uh, the train, what we paid for, what we pay for each year, uh, what the training is with it, and all the other things that they offer. The one that I was particularly interested in was the online purchase orders, uh, because when I read it on the website, it says that it updates, it, it automatically encumbers, and when you, when you fill it out or finish it, it takes the encumbrance away, so you, every day, at the end of the day, you know how much you have committed for expenses. Right, and it just seemed like a huge workload help for, for Shelley and Kim. Um, and then there were some other ones, like, we'd talked about budget and some other things in there, so, so I got the prices for that. There's also a lot of, um, stuff with building permits that I think John was running into, and, and some of those things in there. I don't, I don't know whether these things are worth anything or not, but I put it all in a, a table with, and asked Shelley and John just to say what they thought, whether we should use these or not. And, um, the ones that we do have, I think we really need to understand why we're not using them, some, some of them, 'cause we've paid for them. Like, the online purchase order, the training for it takes a day, it's good for a year. We bought that three years ago, we've never turned it on, uh, but they'll, they'll honor the training, that, that kinda thing.
Who would take that training, Bruce?
Um, it'd be anyone who's doing purchase orders.
You know...
And, and they spread it out, it, it doesn't have to be all done in one day, it's, it's all online, sorry.
I was just gonna say, you know, we have $17,500 that we allowed for additional help in that office. We were batting around things, you know, one was, are we hiring a budget officer, are we hiring someone for, um, for purchases, you know? Should we, is this part of that big discussion? I mean, who does get the training? What do we do?
And if we're going to hire a backup person or a support person, shouldn't we be doing that, and that person should be the one to take that training?
Well, that's, I think department heads might need this training, if you...
Yeah, I think you're right. Shelley?
Not, well, you know...
No, the, the online...
Bobby, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's anybody who uses a purchase order.
So, this speaks to the needing to get the units up and running in our office and there, everybody, forget about the manual filling out of purchase orders, fill it out in the software and...
Right.
Okay.
Right, and the, a couple of the towns use that, and Dodd's probably familiar with it, too, um, and they, they get their numbers like that.
Is, for the training, is it for a, a one-time charge for one person, or can multiple people...
No, it's as many as you want.
Oh, as many as you want.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, so that's what that was, so, the, the matrix was there, I believe I sent that to all of you.
Yeah, yep.
Um, the, the matrix is there on, it's the first page...
It was an Excel sheet, right?
No, it was, I think it was, uh, Word. Um, you know, do, can you, do you think you can use it? Do we, you know, do we use it now? And these other ones, do you think you could use it? Getting a, you know, taking a bottoms-up approach. Um, and then we'll, I think that the next step for us is after the two offices have weighed in, um, then to have that discussion.
Bruce, what does RDA stand for?
I don't know.
Dodd, do you know?
It's the name of their company, it's an acronym.
Oh, it's just a...
It's just a letter of their company, in Georgia.
Got it.
Yeah, it, yeah, they're in Atlanta. The, um, I've been talking to the COO, so, I thought he was a bird, but, um, never mind.
A bird?
COO, never mind. So, that's the update on that.
Okay.
Public comment?
Sure.
Crane Village resident, since you, since you brought it up, you mentioned looking at some of their other modules, one of which was perhaps building apartment, uh, and I guess it's really more of a question, are my firm, or my ex-firm, I've sold it, still work there part-time, has a proposal in front of the board for having an integrated building, planning, zoning solution, which I would suspect, of course...
zoning solution, which I would suspect, of course, I'm a little biased, is far superior to anything that a financial company would offer for automating that part of the town activity. Is there any progress on where that, where your decision-making is on looking at building and planning and zoning? Because your tools are really quite outdated.
Unfortunately, a bilateral need replacement has interfered with the review of those proposals. I know we have that proposal, and I know we have another proposal. And I think Gina has given those out to some people for advice.
Okay.
And I will focus on it when I come back in March. So we haven't forgotten about it.
Let me just mention that there's, there's county money available, and the deadline for applying is...
March 13th or March 15th?
No, that's the state.
I thought you were talking about June.
Well, that's when hopefully the money will come out. I'm working now with the Clark's office and the bookkeeping office to workshop the RFPs that I did for tech, to come up with a recommendation and build in so that whoever we award it to really helps us write to get grants for that. I think that there's money in the county for us, probably about $50,000, which could cover, go a long way to cover both pieces. So we can't let this go on too much longer is what I'm saying. If we want to go...
No, it hasn't been forgotten about.
Right.
Our cost is way below $50,000.
Well, there's also the RFP tech initiative for the town hall, which includes new computers, networking, wireless routers, mail server, yeah.
Dave sits there keeping me up to date. Just one other quick note, I did Google foil relative to phones. And if you Google that topic, you'll come up with a Robert Freeman response. I just found one quickly that says that at least text messages are foil-able. And there was a long discussion, that's some board official in some town texting while in a meeting, and is that foil-able? And there was a long discussion about why is he texting instead of listening to the public? But, but in any case, at least some portion of the phone records, at least the text messages, and I'm guessing, under certain circumstances, who you called might be foil-able too.
Thank you, Dodd. I did attend a seminar about grants for shared services from the state, and it's extremely complex. But it looks like if we have a dual approach with the village, that we have a shot at applying for at least half a dozen different grants. But it's going to be a long, arduous process, as Joe knows, having gone through the grant process. But I'm following up on that.
Is this the webinar?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was on that too.
Were you?
Yeah, I thought it was kind of administrative.
It was a little bit, but he answered. I, I sent a bunch of questions that he didn't answer, but he sent me answers to all of them.
Okay.
Which was very helpful.
I'm paying about 20 bucks an hour for health, for childcare, so if we can keep moving, it'd be great.
Gee, I could take that job. That's good pay, Tom. You must be getting a lot of money.
Yeah.
Update on the landfill beaver situation.
Okay, let's see. The article in the Observer got some public reaction. And one of them was an engineer from Crawford who called Joe. Joe called or referred him to me.
Is this the newest article or the older article?
It's the one, the no-action article.
The recent one?
I guess. I don't know. And so what he suggested was that we use pond leveller. And pond leveller is basically a 10-inch pipe, 10 feet long with holes drilled in it, and a cage wrapped around it, and then an eight-inch pipe extension running out. This goes through the, the beaver dam, and it keeps the water level down. So the beaver gets frustrated and moves away. So that, that's the suggestion. And he said they used it in Tivoli. So I said, well, how much is it going to cost? And he says, well, I gotta talk to my boss. So we haven't gotten, gotten that part done. I also told Chazen, since they were here the last time, about it. They didn't know about it. And I said, you know, we might have to go out for bids or something on this, so you might want to start looking at it. And then I asked Mr. Mannix to, I called DEC, by the way. And DEC said, we'll probably need permits to do this because we're disturbing the dam. But it, you know, it keeps, there's advantages and disadvantages to it. But it seems ideal for ours because it's a spring, it works with springs or stream-fed ponds. It works for places, wetlands, what are ponds, whatever. Don't, don't whack me for the, the terms. And it works for places where the beaver population has not been well-established, so ours isn't. But it keeps, keeps it wet there, so it becomes a little wetland and handles the leach aid or whatever that, that we see as an advantage. So this is kind of a win-win. It's inexpensive.
Did you talk to Tivoli to see how it worked for them?
I, I called up and I, the guy that I was supposed to, that talked to didn't get back to me. So, and, and I've got other things.
Yeah.
So I've got a, a DEC call, I've got a, an engineering call, and I've got the Tivoli call coming back in. It's, it's not expensive. It's easy to do. We just have to figure out the permits. Once we get that, I'll come back to the board and recommend that we do this probably, and I'll give you a price estimate. So that's kind of the update on that.
Do you happen to know, since you're our beaver expert now, are they active all winter? Do they hibernate? Is there, do we want to get them disrupted before the spring? When do they hatch? All of that?
Well, I don't know. What I do know is, I, I found out that we need to do this fairly soon if we're going to use any equipment while the ground is, is still kind of frozen. We may not need to do, use equipment. And we have until April, basically, to, to do anything.
Okay.
April 1st.
So, yeah, then it gets...
The whole ruckus thing, I'm, I'm going to bring it up. I'm going to say it. The DEC will give us permission to trap the beavers, I mean, to kill them. But we, that has to be done by April 1st. Is that something, we want to look at this first or pond leveller?
I, I think the pond leveller is probably a better approach because, like we've said before, if, if we trap the ones that are there now, the next generation's going to come along and move in.
Yeah, we need an aggressive program of...
This is something, yeah, this will stay. The only problem with this is every once in a while, you get to clean out the, the traps around it, the wires.
Get the brush and stuff off?
Probably need two permits, the wetland permit and the wildlife permit.
Yeah, and there was another one because we might be, have to deal with the Corps of Engineers because where it is. And so there's two or three that, I know what they are. I didn't bring them, although I wrote them down. So that's the, anything else on that one? No, all right.
Item four?
The next one is the, we, we used, at the transfer station, we used to have a, a place where out front, people could drop off stuff.
Free to a good home?
Yeah, free to a good home. They could drop off the good stuff, and it would stay there and, and, and people would take it away. What, that's kind of gone away, and we, some of us were talking about it. We think we could do it with a volunteer going out on a Saturday for an hour, and if it was a regular time, to, to just sort the stuff as it comes in. It would go into the middle bay and stay there, and then people could go in anytime they want and pick through it. Stuff that was left for too long would have to be disposed of. And Joan is checking on her own initiative to see if we can do that through the Salvation Army, because they have the bins in there anyway. I talked to Welsh or Royal, whoever's, they have no problem with it. They just don't want to be responsible for anything that's left there. So they're fine with that. So after we find out about the Salvation Army or some other charity to get rid of the stuff, we'll probably start putting a little plan together and come back to the board with that.
That's, I, that sounds great, Bruce. Because I've both dropped things there and taken things home from there before. It's, it was really a nice little thing. Has there been any movement on investigating whether they'll open up another day or not?
I got great pushback when I went back to them the last time, which was in December. So, I don't know. You know, this, this weekend was bad. They closed every single transfer station that they operate. I think there were nine that I saw.
Because of the snow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And of course, the towns that run them, there's only a couple left, but, but they closed too.
They operate nine in...
That's the ones I could find so far, yeah. The, it's kind of interesting because like the, the town of Armenia is open three days a week. But their site, they operate out of the Welsh facility, Welsh-owned facility in Armenia. And so it's really no, there's nothing there for the town. I don't know how to explain it. I mean, we did, you know, we, we have to figure out some more things with that, but it seems to be going okay. We're still not completely, it's, it's not smooth running completely yet, so.
He's, he's very pleasant, I have to say.
Oh, Carl?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's very pleasant. I wish we had more hours.
Yeah, you could, for, for this topic? For the, for this topic, you mean?
This topic.
Yeah. Oh, you just have to give your name at the mic so that the camera can...
My name is Bob Smith. I'm a member of the, I'm a resident of the town. And I make great use of both the transfer station and the landfill. And I think it's great that we're doing something about the beavers. I think it's overdue. I think the town spent a lot of money putting in, basically elevating a roadway back there just so it flooded on both sides of the elevated roadway. So I'm glad to hear that. And I'm disappointed to find out that the karting company makes the decision about whether our transfer station is open or not. I'd like to believe that we would make that decision. They are our subcontractors. We're not theirs. I was disappointed to find it closed. I went up there at 10:30 on Saturday morning, and the place had been plowed. Everything was open except the gate. And they have an additional problem in that I tried to call, and I was on hold for 55 minutes. When I finally gave up, I mean, I sat there for 15 minutes and then drove home and stayed on hold. And if they're going to have Saturday hours, I think that they have to have Saturday coverage, at least of their phone system, so you can understand what's happening. And I agree with you, by the way, whoever runs it for Royal Karting or whoever they are is a really nice guy. He's very personable, easy to get along with, and helpful, as a matter of fact. Older people go up, I'm not talking about me, but I mean, older people go up, he actually helps unload their cars and stuff. I think, I think it's nicely run and probably as good as it can be when it's just one day, when part of one day a week. I would like to think that when they take it on themselves to close the facility, that they would give you an alternate day. And it would be automatic. If it's closed Saturday, then it's going to be Tuesday, so everybody in the town would know that. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Thanks for...
I've had the same problem with the telephones.
We, we, I think they called it noon on, I called you right after that and asked you to put out a, a blurb that it was closing.
There was an email that was on the town website that it would be closed on Saturday because of the forecast of heavy snow.
But, but this brings up, when, when we talk to them again about the contract, we have, we should put in some contingency.
Even phone notification on, so you're not sitting there waiting for someone to pick up. Have a message that it's closed due to the weather and the makeup day will be X. We should have a makeup day.
It's the same problem that all of us have with communication. It's something you've got to go look for. You don't know to go look for. Same with the changing the rules of the landfill. The notice that went out on the town website, I looked at it, I thought, oh my God, they're going to charge me $50 for a little load? And it turned out that that was actually a bid that was sent out for large use, not for residential use. So if you have to go look for it, you usually don't know to do that. If it's pushed, that's optimal, but how do you maintain the ID list? I mean, I understand the issues, but it would just be nice if it were more publicized and more automatic. Every time you have a significant snow, it's going to be Tuesday instead of Saturday. Everybody knows that. You don't have to dump anybody any of that.
Does anyone here have a sense for the recycling part of it? If, if we opened it, you know, say Monday for a couple of hours, just to take in recycling and not garbage? Does anybody know if that would help anything?
No, Bruce, I only take recycling.
I take my garbage there. Now I'm going to have two-week-old garbage before I get to dump my garbage. And what do I do with that? I mean, I live in an 1870's farmhouse, and so I basically have a buffet for my mice.
I have that too, but...
It seems like a Ryan Beck thing.
But my point is, my thought is, Bruce, if, if you're going to have, have it open for just the recycling, why not be able to toss your garbage in too? Or are you thinking no one would have to be there if you were just recycling?
Well, I'm concerned about the cash flow. You know, if we put in volunteers or something or had our staff there, we, we have two problems if we open up the, the garbage. Because if the compactor fills, then we have to call somebody and haul everything away. And then there's the collecting of the cash and giving the thing. So that gets a little, we need more thought with that. The recycling part of it isn't that much of a problem because you're just throwing stuff in and there's no money involved.
Yeah, I get, I guess I get the sense. And I had a couple of people ask me, you know, is there a contingency plan? I think garbage is the biggest issue for most people. I, based on what, I don't know, three people's comments and my own experience, so it's not broad, but...
Yeah, the other thing I want to do with this, I want to try and get more of a better handle on the actual number of people, number of households that are using it. Because a lot of these decisions that we made were based on the usage dropping off from 36% down to 13% of the, of the residences in town. And, you know, I don't know whether that's changed, whether it's leveled off or, or the trend's continuing. But...
I just had a thought. There is a conflict of interest though for Royal, because they keep those hours short on the transfer station. They're likely to eventually give up because either they'll pick up at your house.
Yeah, yeah.
So why would they want to stay open more hours?
I, I think, I think that's a, a fair notion to consider. But if you go and you look at all the other towns, basically, or most of the other towns, we're not at least as normal. Than quite a few of them. The, the one that's best, though, I think, is Beekman. They all have Sunday hours. They have Thursday, Saturday and Sunday. And I don't know how they do that, but...
Who runs that?
Royal. So, there's more improvements that we need to do here, so... Yeah.
It's a bigger town, right? It's a bigger...
Yeah.
Don't they have 20,000 people in Beekman?
15,000.
All right. Any further discussions? We have executive session. That pertains to what? Is it for discussion on what?
Matters leading to the appointment of a particular person, current litigation and collective bargaining pursuant to Article 14, I think, of civil service.
So it might be there for a while. We were supposed to follow up on another item, which we're going to look for something in the back. What was that?
I'm going to try to find the attachment to that resolution.
Affordable housing.
Yeah, but that, so, all right, well, we'll just find out. So I guess Fred will be here. We may make a decision afterwards, based upon the affordable housing issue, at least. So...
Matters to the appointment of a particular person.
Okay. Before we do that, any comments from the public? Because it might be a little while. Okay? All right. So motion...
Just a quick comment. In, in the report for the layers, I mean, the Northern Dutchess Alliance, that was videotaped. I think videotaped... I did videotape that whole talk and stuff, and that can be found on YouTube under Fred Carty's Video Service.
Fred Carty's Video Service on YouTube, okay.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
So do we have a motion in the last?
Motion second to.
Motion.
Go to the second.
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 All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The workforce housing, follow up?
Yes.
Are you ready for a second?
Yeah. We have on the agenda a motion to approve the filing and signing by our supervisor of a declaration containing these types of covenants. And this will be filed together with our agreement with the gardens, and will run in perpetuity. Paragraph one says the restrictions in this declaration and in the agreement which is attached thereto will run with the land. Paragraph two, that says that these restrictions will bind every person at any time in the future, and again, run with the land. And in the event of a sale of the unit, these restrictions come within it. Paragraph three gives the town the right to enforce these restrictions. Paragraph four allows the town to waive the restrictions, and we may have to waive in the event of FHA. And five allows us to amend the conditions, just in case we think of some other restriction that we want in the future, but that amendment will not apply to the existing owner and the existing finance source. So if we have a motion to approve our supervisor signing this, I so move.
Second.
Good, Bruce.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Five-one, sorry.
Four to one.
Five-zero, I'm sorry.
Five-zero.
I'm sorry, five-zero, yeah. Next item, Elizabeth.
I'd like to make a motion to retain Warren Raplansky as our municipal council at $165 an hour.
Second.
Any discussion?
Four, this is this year, and she would send us a retainer agreement saying that we can use her on those things we request. That's the usual form of our retainer.
I'll request a retainer agreement from her tomorrow.
We have motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so moved. Five-one, sorry.
Four to one.
Five-zero, I'm sorry.
Five-zero.
I'm sorry, five-zero, yeah. Next item, Elizabeth.
I'd like to make a motion to retain Warren Raplansky as our municipal council at $165 an hour.
Second.
She said 165?
Mm-hmm.
165.
Mm-hmm. And I'll request a retainer agreement from him tomorrow as well.
Right, again, it's on those matters that we refer to him.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, I'll abstain on that.
Me too.
So moved. And is there?
No other action.
Thank you. Great.
I have, I'd like to know, the town clerk residency law was repealed? It's still on the books?
We never voted on it. Oh, did we repeal it?
It was repealed, I believe.
I think so, yeah.
It's still on the books.
What does that mean?
That may be they just haven't reprinted it. You're saying that when you look in the statute book, it's still there?
Online? Well, there's two things. One is that we haven't gotten some stuff up to general code that we need to get up there. But two, if it's repealed, I believe that they still keep the old local law up there, but just the new one that repeals it goes up. I'm not sure about that. It's possible. I could be wrong with that. General Code may or may not do that, do it that way.
Okay, well, I'd like to be sure that it's off the books pretty soon.
It is.
I don't want to have people looking at it.
Are you going to fire John?
No, I'm not going to fire John.
I think, John, all you got to do is maybe call them. We know we filed it with the Secretary of State.
Right, it's filed with the Secretary of State, it just has to get up to general code.
Right, so I think they reprint it, you know, not every day.
Periodically.
So, you know, maybe they have that reprint in. Or maybe we need to pass some more laws so we get some volume, so.
Right.
I have one other thing, the, I'd like to schedule, well, we talked about the C A B candidate, we're going to interview the C A B candidate the next meeting at 6:30.
Okay.
Also, the park committee would like to come and present the status of where they are.
Fantastic.
They've been going around doing all that kind of stuff.
Do they want to do an out-of-town board meeting?
Yeah, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Presentation.
Great.
So motion second to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye!
Aye, so moved.